Okay. So, we get started? Good evening, I'd like to call the Whately School Committee meeting to order for December 2nd, 2013, 7:00. Matt Fortune, this is Chris Sibley, Don Scroski. We have, ably assisted by our Principal Peter Crisifulli, our Superintendent Marty Barrett, and Business Manager Patty Kavanaugh. And so, we'd like to start with a review and approval of the minutes for November 4th.
I move that we accept the minutes of November 4th.
All right, well, second that. Any discussion? Are you all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, approved. And then, we turn to Patty for a financial statement, please.
You have before you the November financial statement, and we have no new variances to report. We do have eight warrants to sign tonight. We have the November fiscal agent payroll, an encumbered warrant from invoices that were encumbered in last fiscal year. We have our November monthly expenses. We have a school lunch warrant, an after-school warrant, the REED grant expenses, school choice, which is a tuition payment, and circuit breaker, which pays for our sped transportation. The only other thing I wanted to bring to your attention was that we did get notified last week that our school lunch program was approved for a six cents increase per meal because our menus now are approved and following the Healthy Kids Act meal pattern menu. So, we will be getting some additional funding there.
Does that come from the state or from the federal government?
Both.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Patty? Thank you very much. Let's move on to public comment.
You guys are awesome.
All right, are we loud enough for you tonight?
I'd say do project.
Okay.
That will help, or they will always help.
Thank you. Okay, under unfinished business, we have a couple of discussion items. One involves outdoor lighting and one involves the sprinkler system. Pete, could you be presenting those?
I can tell you what I am, maybe together we can get you in a little bit. Let's take the one about the sprinkler system first, which is, there really is no news. We haven't needed any repairs, at least since the last time you asked, and since before then too, I believe. We've certainly been spending some money in the building on other items that have come up. I think we informed you folks about some of the refrigeration issues we had over the summer. We've had some heating system work done, you know, where again, just the age of the system, we've had a few things that need to be replaced, circulators and things of that nature. But as far as the sprinkler system is concerned, there have been no issues now in quite some time, not gone with it. So, we are still in a position where the town is holding the appropriation from the last town meeting of $60,000. And there are some options moving forward about what we might want to do with that. Maybe Marty could address that part of it, but at the moment, the system has been stable.
Basically, the treasurer said that they would ask Lynn Sibley, you know, before he put it back into the main budget. So, their suggestion was just to let it sit there, sort of in a savings account until it became necessary to spend it.
Are there questions?
No.
I mean, there was one item that had been identified. My problem is, I can't remember the name.
The accelerators, I think.
Is that it? That you had said would need replacing no matter what, and I'm wondering if that has that been replaced, or is that something we now think we don't need to replace?
That's a good question. I do remember talking to you about the accelerators, and those are a part of the sprinkler system. I will double-check that for you, because I think those may have been replaced. And if they were, it didn't come out of the appropriation, it came out of the current operating budget. Because we certainly haven't accessed any of that.
Right.
But I will double-check on that for you and get back to you with the answer to that question. Because I do know those were slated for replacement.
Right, that's my very concern.
Okay.
Make sure that happens, or has happened, yeah. And outdoor lighting?
Yeah, Bob has asked for some estimates. He hasn't gotten them as of yet, so I don't have any cost to bring to you. Frankly, when I talked to Pete afterwards, and we realized the time of year that most of the large evening events occur, that area on the other side of the island is lit. Bob estimates that to do some outdoor lighting on that side is going to be rather expensive, so.
So, there's no power that goes across to the other side of the island now. So, putting any lighting out there, short of solar lighting, which in itself would have some cost, there's going to be some cost involved. And I think what Marty's point was that there's only a few events that happen here that really require a lot of parking across the way. As you may have noticed coming in tonight, busy basketball night, lots of vehicles out front, not many vehicles in the parking lot where it's lit. Certainly, town meeting and other things that happen in the evening, you know, could happen during that time of year when it gets dark early. The places that are lit seem to be lit well enough, you know, to get around. I think it's, the issue is when you have to walk to a car that's parked in an unlit spot is when things get a little dicey out there.
But I will bring you estimates when you get that.
Right. And he's looking at estimates for lighting this side of that island as well?
I think that primarily-
Yeah, when we walked out there, it was on the other side.
Primarily lighting those places that aren't lit where people may go park when there's a bigger event. Open house tends to not be, well, you know, open house, we do have people parking across the way, but it still happens early enough in the year where it's not quite that dark when it's over. It usually runs from 6:00 to 7:00, and that's early October, so it's not terrible at that time of year. But I think the thinking is, what's the, you know, sort of the cost benefit, if you will? How often do we have folks parking on the other side of the island where lighting would be required? It's not that often. Of course, it wouldn't hurt if we were able to afford it to have the extra lighting for safety, et cetera. But I think that's the issue at hand.
And I know some constituents had written about having trouble with seeing the curb or tripping or falling, and so I don't remember precisely where she was talking about, you know, if that would be something that is actually lit now, or is, could be, or if that's, you're talking about-
I don't know exactly where the curb either.
I guess we would have to ask that person who wrote to us where exactly she was parked. But generally speaking, if you're parked in the lot or along the front of the building here, there's adequate lighting there. And I'm parked in the back by the loading dock tonight, and in fact, thought about it as I was parking, you know, how does the light feel here? There is a spotlight on the back of the building, there's a nearby post that's lit. And so, if you're parking where, if you're parking in the parking lot, which is approved parking, there's lighting. And there's lighting on the walkway. The front technically is really a bus lane, you know, so after-hours, people park there anyway, and that's lit. And as you know, it's lit all the way down to the road on one side, and that tends to be overflow parking, too. So, what we have is an overflow parking lighting issue on the other side of the island. That might be one way to describe it, is that it's really a lighting issue for overflow parking.
Perhaps there could look into some sort of temporary lighting, or something that could be put out on events that doesn't require-
Well, the other thing that we could, the other thing we could consider is painting the curb.
In a fluorescent color?
I've seen it, you know?
Luminescent?
Like a yellow, so to discern the curb from the sidewalk.
We can also consult with our highway folks.
Sure.
I'm sure that Keith Bartwell would be happy to talk to us about any ideas he may have to make it safer for everyone.
All right, thank you very much. I look forward to hearing those estimates and some other creative possibilities. We don't have any, yeah, I guess now we would move on to our new business discussion items, right? And those include the budget and the transportation bid. I don't know what order you'd like to take those in, but we also have a vote regarding the transportation bid.
Is it your preference that we do the bid first?
Why not?
Okay. So, in October, we went out to bid for a new five-year transportation contract. We participated in a joint bid with six other Franklin County schools and school districts. We were able to use a grant to offset the cost of the transportation consultant, who was the Flaherty Consulting Group. The bid opening was Tuesday, November 19th, at Franklin County Technical School. There were two bids, two separate and distinct bids. One was for individual school district awards, and the other was a collective bid for all schools and districts. We received two bids on the individual bid and one bid on the collective. Because the individual bids were lower than the collective bid, we'll only be looking at the individual bids. The two bids received were from Gribco, who is our current contractor, and Kameskis Inc. from Gilmas. And as you can see on the chart, there's a big disparity between the two bids. If we go with Gribco, our regular transportation will increase by $7,155 in the first year, or 18.55 percent. The Kameskis bid would increase our transportation costs by $85,635, or 222 percent. So, what we're looking at is Whately Elementary, we have two buses, Whately 1 and Whately 2. We're currently paying $107.13 per bus per day. That would go up to $127 per bus per day, or a total annual cost of $45,720. The Kameskis bid would be $345 per bus per day, or a total cost of $124,200. If you go to page three, this bid also included pricing for individual items, and Whately is the last square there. So, if we wanted the buses, if we required the buses to have a GPS system, that would be $28 per bus per day. If we required the vendor to use drop chains on the buses, that would be $12 per bus per day. Or if we want digital camera systems, that would be $9 per bus per day. So, we're going to need to take two votes, one for the contract and one if you want any of the additions on the buses. The new contract will also call for a COLA increase in years 2 to 5. This increase will be based on the Consumer Price Index for the northeast urban area. This is the same stipulation we have in our current contract, and it could move our daily bus fee either up or down depending on the index. I was able to research, the past three years, we've had increases of 1.95 percent based on that income that it indexed for this year. The prior year, we increased 3.05 percent, and for fiscal year 12, it was 1.97 percent. So, we did have two low years and then a little spread there in the middle. The other cost factor in this contract is the fuel escalation clause. An adjustment is implemented when there is a greater than 10 percent variation from the base price of the fuel. For this contract, the base will be $3.02 per gallon, and this is the New York Journal of Commerce Low Tank Wagon Price for Boston Terminal Ultralow Sulphur Diesel for September of 2013. The only difference from our current contract is right now, we do this calculation annually, and now it will be done monthly, and we don't have the 10 percent variation. So, this should save us a few dollars in what we have been paying in fuel escalation, as long as our prices stay pretty consistent.
Are there questions for Patty?
The only question I have, how come it's coming, bids coming up at this time of year? Usually, it comes up in the summer.
Well, the bid, the bid is done June of this, of 2014, so the counties wanted to go out early, hoping that the earlier we went out, the better prices we could get. Because the bus ordering, if our vendors had to order new buses, that has to be done in January for them. So, we wanted to get our bid out good and early so that we could, you know, jump ahead of the other systems.
Okay, that makes sense.
Chris?
I think we're all, I'm also have a question.
I have a couple. What is the drop chains mean? I mean, it's something the administration would recognize.
For snow removal, snow.
For traveling in the snow. I don't think in Whately, I think it's more an issue for Conway and the Hilltowns that would need the drop chains. I don't believe we currently use drop chains now.
You're talking about tire chains?
Tire chains.
Yes.
Oh, okay. I'm just confused, then, if that's the case, is we only pay it when they use them?
Correct.
Okay, so the annualized cost is just an estimate?
Right.
Yeah, it's not every day, but. Do you have any dirt roads on Whately?
Just a few. We have a few, two, three.
Does the bus travel on them? Would it blow it, maybe?
I don't know. I know it goes on Conaway.
They don't go on Conaway.
Not anymore.
Yeah, so if we're not traveling on those?
Right.
If the highway department has recommended chains, at whose discretion would the chains be put on?
The transportation.
Well, it says pricing per day. It sounds like to carry those chains, they're charging us $12.
Well, yeah, I would have to find out if it would be for every day of the contract, we'd have to pay for the chains for them to get them, or if it would be on the days that they were utilized.
Because, you know, if I'm looking at that, it looks like we're getting charged $12 a day to have those chains installed on the bus.
For an annual cost.
Well, most of the drop chains, which are on school buses now, where they're, they drop, they're already mounted on the bus permanently, and then they drop.
Oh, okay. Oh, so it would be every day?
You don't actually have to put them on the wheels any.
Right, so it would actually be every day then?
Yeah.
Twenty-six to thirty-two thousand dollars.
And so, the cost probably represents all of their costs for having those added to their buses?
Correct.
Yeah, they're probably, probably close to $1,000 a set. I'm just guessing.
Is there a desire from the administration's side to have either a GPS system or a digital camera system?
I don't know how you feel about cameras, certainly not GPS, but I haven't heard of any outrageous behaviors-
No.
-in the district that have necessitated.
I wouldn't think we would need cameras on the buses.
I do believe we have the ability to put them on the buses, should there be a, should a problem arise, but these would be on continually.
I mean, like any school, on any school bus, there are minor problems that happen on the buses sometimes, but nothing that would warrant, you know, the ongoing use of a camera.
So, my inclination would be to go with the recommendation not to consider those additions, or not to exclude those.
Well, I'll move that we accept Gribco's bid at $127 a day with the stipulations so noted, and that we take no action on the GPS drop chains or camera.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
And I do have a copy of the bid here with me, if anybody wanted to look at it.
And this, now that brings us to the proposed FY15 budget.
So, you have your binders in front of you, and what we are presenting tonight for the FY15 budget is a budget in the amount of $1,590,329. This is an increase from this current year of $73,203, or 4.83 percent. We also have some major changes in both our school choice funding and our circuit breaker funding, which we'll take a look at after we review the changes for our proposed budget. So, I'm on page one of nine in section A of the budget, and we'll go through the salary-related costs. We have an increase in the cost of contract adjustments and steps in the amount of $42,511. This is a salary increase for teachers and instructional assistants that was negotiated at 2 percent for FY15. We have nine teachers who are stepping, still stepping through the steps, and one who moved to step 20. We have 12 instructional assistants who are still stepping. This also includes two reclassifications of teachers and instructional assistants. We moved the reading instructor, reading instructor from the instructional assistant category to the teaching category. And we also moved one special education IA to the general instruction IA. So, you, when you look at the details, you might see some big swings, but that's what those are. We added two hours per week of adaptive PE teaching services. We eliminated two part-time physical therapy positions, and we replaced it with one contracted physical therapy. We eliminated $250 in cafeteria salaries, and we reclassed the summer custodial wages from maintenance of building to the custodial salary line. We have another increase in the sped substitutes of $2,300. This current year, we had reduced this line item because we thought it was being used for substitute teachers, and it's actually being used for substitute IAs, so we do have to replace it. So, we have to put that money down. We have an increase in our retirement incentives of $16,025. We had no retirements this year, next year we have one. The retirement will happen in fiscal year 14, but the payment happens in fiscal year 15. And then, we have a decrease in our contract adjustments of $3,039, and this was due to the budgeting. In FY14, we budgeted for both union and non-union, and next year, we just have to budget for non-union. Other operational increases, we have $300 in nature's classroom. This is due to the contracted stipends for teachers, which increased from $50 per night to 100. We have an increase in professional development stipends of $3250. This increase is due to the new contractual obligation of $150 per year for each instructional assistant. We also increased the budgeted amount for teachers' professional development to equate to the number of teachers times the annual allowance of $600. This line had previously been under budget. We have an increase in evaluations and other services of $2,225, and this is due to required services in students' IEPs. We have an increase in the computer registers of $1,000. This was due to the elimination of the standalone server to cloud computing hosted by Redeker for our student database. We have discussed that as a variance earlier in the evening. We have an increase in our school electricity account of $1,500 due to an increase in our utilization in FY13. The increase in transportation should be about $7,345. This was due to the contract that you just approved, increasing from 107 to 127, plus an estimate for the fuel escalation. And an increase in instructional hardware of $6,625. This was the year two amount for the technology plan that you approved last year. Operational decreases, we have a decrease due to Whately's percentages of the expenditures reducing from 10.62 percent down to 9.84. But overall, the expenses for the superintendent's office have increased for salaries, health insurance, and district network expenses. We have a decrease in summer school tuitions of $335, and this reduction was based on the actual summer tuition we paid this year. We have a decrease in waste removal of $460. This was due to a new negotiated rate of $120 per month and a reduction in unscheduled pickups. We have a decrease in the MAS dues of 550. The savings here are due to us using a new allocation method that more exactly matches the way that we're charged by MASC, so it actually was a decrease for Whately in 550. And we have a decrease in the principal's insurance of $57, and again, that was based on the actual premiums we paid this year. So, our total operational increase is $73,203, or 4.83 percent. If you'll turn the page, we can look at the school choice budget. Right now, our school choice students make up approximately 36 percent of our student population. For FY13, that brought in revenue in the amount of $326,940. Because the revenue was over our projection of $275,000, we begin the year with a healthy balance of $230,805. We're projecting revenue for FY15 in the amount of $288,000. This takes into account 52 students and an increment for school choice students receiving sped services. What we are proposing for expenditures for FY15 is one day of guidance at $14,026, two days of speech services in the amount of $25,441, one day of the psychologist services in the amount of $13,622, 25 percent of a sped teacher's salary in the amount of $15,819, sped aids in the amount of $124,875, and contracted occupational therapy services in that total $5,040. That's a total of $198,823, which would leave us a balance of $319,982 at the end of the year. This is the healthiest balance Whately's had in their school choice account in many years, and it would actually allow us to go back to spending a year in arrears as the other union schools do. Currently, we spend our current revenue in the current year. So, the other thing we could do with such a large balance is to reduce this year's budget increase. I have an analysis here that shows the effect of the- Sure. Oh, wait, why don't I get that? So, we could leave the balance in there, as is, at $319,982, and present the town with a budget increase of 4.83 percent. Or, we could reduce our local budget by $50,000 of expenses and transfer them to school choice, which would lower our proposed budget to $1,54329, or 1.53 percent increase, and our school choice would still have a balance of $269,982. The other option we can consider is to reduce the local budget by $100,000 of expenses and transfer them to the school choice fund, which would reduce our budget from last year to $1,49329, and that would be a negative 1.77 percent increase, so it would actually be a decrease, and we would still have $219,982 in our school choice. We're in a pretty good position because having this much money and being able to spend in arrears instead of in the current year allows us to have more time to adapt if any school choice changes should happen, as far as the revenue. I mean, they haven't changed, but if we do have a decrease in the amount of school choice children, it would, it gives us, it buffers the time for to put the money back on the local budget.
Do you believe under each of these options, we would still be in that condition where we could hold the money in arrears, as you're saying?
Well, even with the $50,000, if we're saying we're bringing in $288, we'd be at $269, we're close. We're still close to being a year in arrears.
I see.
If we, if we do the $100,000, we're down to $220 versus $288, so we're cutting it a little bit, we're slicing the pie a little thinner there.
I understand. Other questions for Patty at this point?
Okay. The other thing before you vote on that, that I think you have to consider, and I just want to give you all the information, is that if you look at our circuit breaker projection, our circuit breaker funding is also undergoing some changes. And what's happening here is, for FY15, we do not have any students in out-of-district placements. Therefore, our revenue will probably decrease to only about $4,500, which combined with our projected ending balance of $50,505, will have $54,981 to expend in '15, which I am proposing that we spend $5,000 on sped transportation and 75 percent of a sped teacher salary in the amount of $47,456. This will leave us with a balance of $2,525 and no revenue coming in for FY16. So, we will no longer have this fund, and we will have to pick up the $52,456, adjusted for salary increases and sped transportation costs. That would have to go back over to either school choice or the local budget in for FY16. So, I just wanted you to be aware of that before you voted on changing your balance in your school choice account. We will also get some, an educational aid that will be paid from the 94142 grant. We have a partial kindergarten aid salary in the amount of $6742, and our preschool tuition should offset about $21,550 of our preschool teacher's salary. The next pages are just the detailed line item budgets, and if you go to page eight of nine, you can see that the proposed, you can see the number for the FY2015 proposed budget is the $1,009, $1,59329, with the increase of $73,203, and the percentage of 4.3 percent. So, we are tied out. And the last page here just gives us a summary of our funding sources. So, even though our local budget will be $1,59329, the total amount spent by Whately will be $1,933256. 82.26 percent of that would come from the town appropriation, 10.28 percent would come from school choice, 1.3 percent would come from state and federal grants, 2.71 percent would come from circuit breaker, 1.11 would be early childhood tuitions, and 2.33 percent from school lunch. The rest of the budget is the detailed- The rest of the budget is the detailed, gives you the detailed line items for what each of the lines is used for. And that is all I have for you tonight if you have any questions or would like to take an action on the school choice.
Sorry, what are you proposing for action on the school choice tonight?
Well, if you don't want to, we would have to adjust our budget before it went to the town, so if you were considering either option one or option two, it would be good if we could do that so that we can get the numbers reworked.
Marty, can you remind us of the timetable we're working under, please?
Sure. Your next meeting in January, you have your vote on the budget, on the details of the budget. And I don't have the town meetings as of yet, I'm looking for the timetables that were given out last month. So January 6, you begin your budget deliberations, continue them in February, and more articles are due in February. You hold a public hearing on March 3. So you've got some time.
Yeah, I'd just not move on, do not move on that tonight.
Your recommendation?
Have a chance to look at this.
Look at this and consider these options at our next meeting.
You don't even have to vote it next meeting.
I'm thinking the same exactly.
You know, you've got time.
I'd like to go with the sense of committee, if that's...
That's fine. And I think one thing, too, to keep in mind, this is sort of a perfect storm this year in that you had all of the instructional assistant contracts on the elementary and secondary level, and all the teacher contracts on the elementary and secondary level, all were changed and voted last spring. So all of those new conditions are taking place, along with a five-year bus contract is taking place. So...
Well, let's hope that we're not actually being swamped.
Yeah. So just keep those in mind as you look at the details.
Did you include our percentages on the assessments?
No.
I forgot. I will send them to you via email tomorrow.
I'm just curious, you know, how we, it sounded like we went down.
You did, 9.84 from 10.62.
I will email those out tomorrow. I'm so sorry, I forgot to put those in there.
So you did go down slightly.
All right. Are there any other questions? There are. That will reopen discussion on the budget at our next meeting, which will be in January...
January, I believe it's the 6th, if that's what I just said, I think.
Yes, January 6.
Okay.
Okay. Great. Well, now we would move on to reports. I don't particularly have a report, but I guess I did go to the MAS-C meeting, yes, and voted in favor of all the resolutions that were put forward, and our frontier representative did the same. If you're interested in getting those, they're available either online, or I can talk with you further. I think we can expect speedy action on none of them, but we're on record. All right. And I don't know, Marty, if you have anything else you wanted to add about the, about the meeting itself?
I actually talked a little bit about it at last month's meeting, so I think anything I'd say now would be, we're done.
Okay. Thank you, Pete.
Yep, my report is in front of you, and it's very brief. It's really just a fun report this month about some upcoming events. I want to highlight for the viewing audience and for you gentlemen here at the table that, as you know, we have been, before my time, Waitli was always welcoming of the folks in the arts community, and certainly in the time that I've been here, we've reached out to the folks in the arts community and really brought a lot of great performers to our school for our kids to see, to learn from, and to get excited about. We do, more than ever, our kids are faced with a lot of academics and rigorous academics, so when we have the opportunity to put the arts in front of our students, we really want to and enjoy doing that. And it occurred to me that it's really an effort that comes from a lot of places. The smallest allocation is a little bit of money in our budget each year. It's about 500 bucks that the Waitli taxpayers approve every year in our budget that I get to spend on arts-related events. But the bulk of the money that we spend comes from either our PTO that allocates a little over $1,000 every year, about $1,200 a year. And over the past couple of years, we've also had the good fortune of being funded by the Waitli Cultural Council to the tune of about a couple of thousand dollars a year. And just to give you an idea, this year, beginning in January, we will have several really wonderful artists that'll visit our school. One is a Waitli resident named Mr. G., and Mr. G. is a Grammy-nominated children's recording artist. He's been here once before, we're bringing him back this year. Quite frankly, it's a demand or a command performance or whatever that's called. He was so great last time that folks wanted him back one more time, and we asked, we've put in a grant request with the Waitli Cultural Council, and that money will help us bring Mr. G. back. We also have storyteller Rhona Leventhal, who's been here many times in the past, most recently just last year, and she's also working in conjunction with our after-school program with a really very cool artist and residence arrangement where she's going to come to the school later this month, tell stories to three different age groups, our youngest, the middle kids, and the oldest kids, and talk to them about what it takes to be a storyteller. Then the after-school program is offering several ways of an enrichment program where they're hiring Rhona Leventhal to work with our students to teach them the art of storytelling. And as you might imagine, storytelling is very connected with story writing, and that is an initiative right now across our district where our teachers are using the Lucy Cawkins model to teach our kids how to be the best writers they can be in various genres. So we think this is a really nice fit for our students, and part of what will happen during that after-school enrichment is that students will self-select to become storytellers, and then in a couple of months, later in the late winter, Rhona will come back for another day here at our school during the school day where the students will become the storytellers and present in an assembly and tell their stories to the rest of the students. So I just thought that was a really wonderful way to bring the arts into the school in a way that's very germane to what they're learning as writers, and also, it's a lot of fun. On top of that, we're also bringing back Roger Tinknell, who is, you know, sort of a local legend when it comes to children's musicians. He's been here many times. Last year was not one of the years we had him, but he's coming back this year. And then finally, the Tanglewood Marionettes, which I personally haven't seen, but some of my staff have, and it's an amazingly wonderful marionette company. They have huge, big marionettes, and they put on an amazing show. Our librarian media specialist Paula King saw one of their performances and, you know, told me we really needed to have these folks here, and they are being fully funded by the Waitli Cultural Council. Thank you very much, folks from the council, for approving that funding, and I have invited the folks from the cultural council to join us on January 15. We're having a 9:45 a.m. performance. That little card I gave you, Nat, is school committee's invitation to please join us that morning if you're available, and each of you should feel free to bring a guest if you'd like to come and see the marionettes. But I really just wanted you to know what was happening sort of on that side of the fence. We talk a lot about many other things in these meetings, and I thought it would be fun to fill you in on what's happening in terms of the arts in our school. And then, of course, I include the upcoming calendar for some of the things happening this month. We also have a holiday concert this month on the 18th from 1:45 to 2:30, and I know you all have day jobs and can't always make it here, but if you could ever slip out...
Not all.
But if you could slip out and come join us, that would be wonderful. And if you have any questions about any other items that are not on the report, be glad to answer those.
Yeah, I look forward to attending. That would be great. Questions for Pete? All right. Marty, please.
Yeah, I just have a couple of items. I wanted to bring you up to date a little bit with regards to PARK or the Partnership for Assessment of Readiness for College and Careers. I had another webinar, as I told you, I believe, back in September, October, three of our schools were selected. Well, they didn't have enough participation, so they went to round two selections, so now we have four of the five schools selected. There has been some inquiry from school committees across the state about the legal basis for PARK, and so the commissioner just issued this statement, which I won't read, but basically what that says in the next two paragraphs is that they are trying to come up with an assessment tool that is more reflective of assessing the Common Core standards and moving away from MCAS. So there's going to be a two-year pilot program beginning this spring, and originally, they had talked about it being a one-year pilot, now they've gone to two years, which I think is, makes more sense since they have given us so many mandates, fast and furious from the state. So I was pleased about that. I elected that our district would not be allowed to, blanking on the word, but...
Exemptions.
Thank you, exemptions for the end-of-the-year assessments, because I did not have a strong feeling about how the state was going to manage that data. So we're going to continue as always. We're going to take our MCAS, we're going to take the PARK. We're not exempting anybody, and we'll see what happens. I am curious, because the month of March especially is going to be very test-driven, and I'd like to minimize the level of anxiety with our students as much as possible. So we don't do the rah-rah that some of the other districts do around the state and in other states, but we definitely participate, and we will expect our students to take it seriously, so. I also am just bringing to your attention, and I know you've probably heard about it, that the legislator is considering increasing the state's minimum wage from $8 per hour by a dollar each year until it reaches $11 per hour on January 1st, 2016. This January, we'll see the first increase, and this is just for you to be thinking of. Our current step one for instructional assistance is 12.14 cents per hour. Whatever my experience has been, when the minimum wage rises, other things tend to go hand in hand in the future. So it's just for you to be made aware of, and that's what I have, unless you have questions with me.
Marty, if I could just add one thing about the PARK, and that is that, and it's more for any parents who might be viewing today, is a reminder that the end-of-year pilot in our school is happening just in our fourth grade, and it is a no-stakes assessment. It's important for folks to understand that. Yes, the students will be asked to sit down at the computer and take this assessment, and it'll amount to a couple of hours of their time over a couple of days, but there's really no stakes involved. It's a pilot for this program, and it won't affect their grades or anything moving forward. Just something to think about.
And since it's one grade, we don't have a problem with the number of computers that are required.
Right. We have, the two schools that are participating in online testing are Conway and Waitli. The other two schools are doing pencil and paper tests. That was the state's choice, not ours. We could have applied for an exemption, happy we had an issue with those two schools, but because it's just one grade per school, we're okay.
This might not be something you have the answer to right away, but if we, if the state were to adopt the PARK tests, which are computer-based two years from now, would we be needing to make additional computer purchases at that time?
Yes, yes. We, and the question on everyone's lips is how is that going to be funded, and the state is going through consideration about how they're going to do that. So, as Mr. Skrasinski's reaction...
You will fund it.
Yeah.
We'll look at a state.
And frankly, until the mass broadband goes in and is stable, it's not going to happen. I also think that's another reason that they gave us another year. I don't think it was just kindness of their hearts. I think they realized that much of the state is not up and running as far as computers.
All right, well, we appreciate a heads up as to that.
Yes, we'll keep talking about it.
All right. Then if there's nothing else, I intend to move to adjourn.
So moved.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.